All right. Welcome, everyone. Welcome to the 2025 Annual Town Meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please stand, um, please remain standing for a moment of silence in memory of all of the deceased local public servants who have passed away over the last year, and a firefighter, teacher, police officer, town hall worker, any elected or appointed official or town employee. Let's pause for a moment. Thank you. You may be seated. I'd like to introduce first the people who spent the last several months creating the budget and implementing a spending plan that brought us here tonight. Members of Clinton's Finance Committee, Aaron Powell, Mark Leviger, Bill McGrae, Mike Jankowski, Paul Cherubini, and Bob Latini. Thank you for your service. I also want to take a minute to thank Bob for his many years of service on that committee. His term is up on June 30, and Bob has decided not to seek reappointment. So please join me in thanking Bob Latini for his dedication to the town of Clinton. Members of the Select Board, Julie Perouse, Matt Kobus, Sean Kerrigan, Mary Rose Dicko, and Ed DeValt. Thank you for your service. And please join me in thanking Ed for his years of service, not only as a Select Board member, but on the school committee as well. He is not seeking reelection this year. Thank you very much, Ed DeValt. Along with us tonight, of course, are Michael Ward, Town Administrator, Robert Gibbons, Town Solicitor, and our secretary right down front is Ryan Rular. I'm Terry Ngano, and I'll be your moderator tonight. Before we begin, I think it's time that we thank our longtime Town Administrator and public servant, Mike Ward. As you know, Mike was a legislative aide at the State House for a number of years. Later on, he served as a member of the Select Board, and then he's been doing this, Town Administrator, for something like 30 years. And the success of our town, Mike has a heck of a lot to do with it. We wish him the very, very best in his retirement. Thank you very much, Michael Ward. All right, let me quickly remind you of the rules we use here at town meeting. Any questions, comments, or discussions should be directed to me. I probably won't know the answer, but I can redirect your question to the appropriate person for the right response. To speak tonight, raise your hand. Wait to be recognized by me, and then come forward to one of the microphones here. Make sure to state your name and address before speaking, and make sure to speak very, very closely to the microphone. Please note personalities in your remarks. Please keep your discussion focused on the article in question only. The only votes I will count are from those seated downstairs in the hall. I'm sorry for those standing or somewhere else, but your votes can't be counted. The only people in the hall right now should be registered voters in the town of Clinton or a few non-residents who have, I've given permission to be here tonight. We do have a formal procedure to handle amendments. All proposed amendments should be presented to me in writing. If you wish to amend any article, please come down front, visit Ryan at this table right down here, and obtain an amendment form. Fill it out completely, give it to me when you make your proposal, and this will make things easier for, for all of us. Unless I hear an objection, I will dispense with the formal reading of the warrant, as all of you should have a copy in front of you. So why don't we get started?
Article one, Mr. Moderator, I move to receive the reports of the town officers and to act thereon.
Second.
All right, Article one is to officially accept the reports from each town department. Questions, comments, or discussion? There being none, all in favor, please raise your cards at this time. Thank you, and opposed. Thank you. The article is approved.
Article two, Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to fix the salaries and compensation of all elected officials of the town as provided by Chapter 41, Section 108 of the Massachusetts General Laws. Said salaries and compensation to be effective from July 1st, 2025, to June 30th, 2026, and to raise and appropriate a sum of money therefore.
Second.
So Article two fixes the salaries and compensation for elected officials. Questions, comments, or discussion? There being none, all in favor, cards up, please, and opposed. Thank you. Article two is approved. Article three.
Article three, Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate from the current tax levy the sum of $63,846,883, and to appropriate and transfer from Certified Free Cash the sum of $124,850, and to appropriate and transfer the sum of $15,900 for Ambulance Enterprise Fund indirect costs, and to raise and appropriate the sum of $600,000 from the Ambulance Enterprise Fund, and to appropriate and transfer from the Ambulance Enterprise Fund retained earnings the sum of $385,443, and to appropriate and transfer the sum of $280,750 for Water Sewer Enterprise Fund indirect costs, and to raise and appropriate the sum of $2,467,834 from the Water Sewer Enterprise Fund, and to appropriate and transfer from the Water Sewer Enterprise Fund retained earnings the sum of $350,000, and to appropriate and transfer the sum of $24,000 for Rubbish Enterprise Funds indirect costs, and to raise and appropriate the sum of $829,777 from the Rubbish Enterprise Fund, and to appropriate and transfer from the Rubbish Enterprise Fund retained earnings the sum of $35,000, and to appropriate and transfer the sum of $66,000 from Certified Free Cash as a budget subsidy to the Rubbish Enterprise Fund, and to appropriate and transfer the sum of $14,500 for Landfill Enterprise Fund indirect costs, and to appropriate and transfer from the Landfill Enterprise Fund retained earnings the sum of $480,683, and the sums to be used to defray town charges from July 1st, 2025, to June 30, 2026, as those charges appear in the Finance Committee Report of Recommendations.
Second.
You think it's easy, huh? All right, this is your budget. Let's turn to the appendix, and I will go through each department's budget. So turn to the back of your warrant. If you have any questions or comments, please wait to be recognized, and we'll give everyone a chance at the end to, to look it over one more time. We're starting with the moderator's salary. And there's not a hell of a lot to discuss on that, is there? Moderator. Select Board. Finance Committee. Town Accountant. Board of Assessors. Treasurer Collector. Parking Fines. Town Solicitor. Next page. Facilities and Grounds. Human Resources. Town Clerk. Conservation Commission. Planning Board. Zoning Board. Massachusetts Planning Commission. Economic Development. Insurance and Miscellaneous. Next page. Police Department. Fire Department. Next page, Building Inspector. Gas Plumbing Inspectors. Sealer of Weights and Measures. Electrical Inspector. Emergency Management. Animal Control Officer. School Department. Department of Public Works. Board of Health. Council on Aging. Department of Veteran Services. Bigelow Public Library. Parks and Recreation. And then we have the approved budget completely, the enterprise budgets, the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund. Next page, Rubbish Enterprise Fund, and we stop at the Landfill Enterprise Fund. And all the rest of them are a summary of what we just went over, and of course, the, the sources of revenue. That is your budget for beginning July 1. Take one last quick look at it. Questions, questions, comments, or discussion on Article three, your budget? Are you ready to vote? All right, all those in favor of Article three signify by raising your cards now. Thank you very much, and those opposed. Thank you. The article has been approved. Your budget is approved.
Article four, Mr.
Mr. Moderator, I move to reconsider.
Uh, motion to reconsider at this time. Is there a second to that?
Second.
All right, second. Reconsider, just to explain it very quickly. If you vote in favor of reconsideration, you will nullify the last vote, and Julie will probably have to read all those numbers all over again, too. Uh, and then we, we start discussion again, all right? That's if you're in favor of. If you are opposed to reconsideration, the last vote stands, and this article is passed, and nothing can be brought up again during this town meeting. All right? Everybody got that? So all those in favor of reconsideration signify by raising your card now, please. Thank you, and opposed to reconsideration, thank you. Uh, we will not be reconsidering this budget item. Thank you very much. We're on to Article four.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to authorize the town treasurer and town collector to enter into a compensating balance agreement with a banking institution for fiscal year 2026 pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 53F of the Massachusetts General Laws.
Second.
All right, Article four is just simply allows town officials to put your money in an interest-bearing account. That's all there is to it. Questions, comments, or discussion? There being none, all in favor, hands up, please. Thank you, and opposed. Thank you. Article four is approved. Article five.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $4,800? Is that correct?
Yes.
There's a comma after it, okay. Said sum to be expended for social services in accordance with programs as approved by the Select Board.
Second.
All right, Article five is this, is simply our annual standard contribution to local social services. Questions or comments? There being none, all in favor of Article five, hands up, and opposed. Thank you. Article five is approved. Article six.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $20,000, said sum to be expended as the town of Clinton's share to the Massachusetts Health Education Action Team, WHEAT Incorporated, which committee is a delegated, delegate agency of the United Way of Tri-County.
Second.
All right, thank you. Article six is simply our annual assessment to WHEAT. Questions, comments? There being none, all in favor, cards up, please. Thank you, and opposed. Thank you. Article six is approved. Article seven.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote pursuant to the provisions of Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half of the Massachusetts General Laws to set the limits on the fiscal year 2026 total amounts that may be expended from each of the town's revolving funds established under the Town Administrative Bylaws. Revolving, oh, should I use all? Revolving fund spending limit, gas plumbing inspections, $65,000. Council on Aging, $60,000. Town Hall use, $5,000. Old Home Days, $40,000. Fuller Field, $5,000. Town Clerk, $10,000.
Second.
All right, this article simply sets the limits on the amount of money that various groups can take from their revolving accounts during the year. Questions, comments? There being none, all in favor of Article seven, hands up, and opposed. Thank you. Article seven is approved. Article eight.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate from the Assessor's Overlay Reserve Account the sum of $25,000, said sum to be used to continue the Veterans and Senior Tax Rebate Program for fiscal year 2026.
Second.
All right, this article takes $25,000 that we already have in the Assessor's Overlay Reserve Account, and we move it into the Tax Rebate Program that allows senior citizens and veterans to, to work off part of their taxes. Questions or comments? There being none, all in favor of Article eight, hands up, please. Thank you, and opposed. Thank you. Article eight is approved. Article nine.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer from the Rubbish Enterprise Fund retained earnings the sum of $175,000, said sum to be used by the Superintendent of Public Works Department for fiscal year 2025 budget expenses.
Second.
All right, Article nine simply takes surplus money from last year's Rubbish Enterprise Fund and puts it into this year's account to help get us through to June 30. Questions or comments? There being none, all in favor of Article nine, hands up. Thank you, and opposed. Thank you. Article nine is approved. Article 10.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer from the Water Sewer Enterprise Fund retained earnings the sum of $150,000, said sum to be used by the Superintendent of Public Works Department for fiscal, fiscal year 2025 budget expenses.
Second.
And Article 10 is the same type of thing. It's taking surplus money from last year's Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund and putting it into this year's account to see us through to the end of the fiscal year. Questions, comments? There being none, all in favor of Article 10? Thank you, and opposed. Thank you. Article 10 is approved. Article 11.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 22nd J, inserted by Section 23 of Chapter 178 of the Acts of 2024, entitled "An Act Honoring, Empowering, and Recognizing Our Service Members and Veterans, Known as the HERO Act, Providing for an Additional Uniform Real Estate Property Tax Exemption for Veterans Who Qualify for an Exemption Under Clauses 22nd A through 22nd C, 22nd E, and 22nd F, which exemption shall not exceed 100% of the exemption for which the taxpayer, taxpayer qualifies, and further to set the exemption for fiscal year 2026 and future fiscal years unless town meeting determines otherwise at 100%."
Second.
All right, so Article 11 requires no money at this time. It's simply, we're asking you to accept this statute called the HERO Act. Questions or comments?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Uh, just to be clear, the estimated expense to the town is about $50,000 a year.
But this article is not requesting $50,000.
No, but if people were wondering what the impact would be, that's, that's what the issue is.
Article 11 is simply, do you want to accept the HERO Act in our community? Any other questions? If not, all in favor of Article 11, hands up, please. Thank you, and opposed. Thank you. Article 11 has been approved. Article 12.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer from Certified Free Cash the sum of $150,000 to the Health Insurance Trust Fund.
Second.
Once again, Article 12, $150,000, it's money we already have from free cash to put into the Health Insurance Trust Fund. Questions? There being none, all in favor of Article 12, hands up, please. Thank you, and opposed. Thank you. Article 12 has been approved. Article 13.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town, the town vote to appropriate and transfer from Certified Free Cash the amount of $500,000 to the Stabilization Fund.
Second.
Thank you. Article 13, same type of thing. It's going from free cash into our stabilization fund. Questions? There being none, all in favor of the transfer? Thank you, and opposed. Thank you. Article 13 has been approved.
Mr. Moderator, I'll move to reconsider.
All right, um, we have a reconsideration on.
Second.
What is it, Article 13? I lost my way. Sorry. All right, so once again, reconsideration. If you, uh, if you vote yes to reconsider, we have to redo this again, and there'll probably be further discussion. If you vote no, we will not go back to this again, and the, the vote stands. So all those in favor of reconsidering Article 13, hands up, please. Thank you, and opposed to reconsider. Thank you. That will not be reconsidered tonight. Thank you. Article 14.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate from the Peg Access and Cable Related Fund the sum of $175,000, said sum to be used for fiscal year 2026 cable access-related operating services, programming, and equipment.
Second.
All right, Article 14 takes $175,000 already in the cable fund and uses it as annual operating expenses for the next fiscal year. Questions? There being none, all in favor of Article 14, hands up, please. Thank you, and opposed. Thank you. Article 14 has been approved. Article 15.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer from Certified Free Cash the sum of $1,809.10, said sum to be expended by the fire chief for the following unpaid bill.
Second.
I'm sorry, National Grid.
All right, this is taking money from free cash to handle this unpaid bill from the fire department. And this vote, because it's an unpaid bill, requires a four-fifth vote. Questions, comments? There being none, all in favor of Article 15, hands up, please. Thank you, and opposed. Thank you. The article is approved. Article 16.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to reallocate $31,913.69 appropriated under Article 24, Savage Field Lighting Project at the end of June 6, 2022 Annual Town Meeting, to now be used for general Savage Field maintenance improvements, i.e. fencing, backstop repairs, parking lot improvements.
Second.
Thank you. Article 16 is kind of interesting. In fact, this one and the next two are called, calling for repurposing of leftover money. So apparently, in 2022, you approved $250,000 for Savage Field Lights. Well, now there's a balance left in that account, about $31,000. And now the town would like to use that leftover money to make general improvements to Savage Field, like fencing and parking and all of that. Questions or comments? There being none, all in favor of Article 16? Hands up, please. Thank you, and opposed. Thank you. Article 16 is approved. Article 17.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to reallocate $46,981 appropriated under Article 21, Relocation Construction of Town Hall Offices at the June 20, 22nd, 2020 Annual Town Meeting, to now be used for general town hall repairs and improvements.
Second.
All right, same thing. In 2020, you approved $100,000 for relocating offices, moving offices in this building. There's a balance now of $47,000 that they would like to use, uh, this leftover money for general repairs to the town hall, general improvements, things like that. Questions, comments, discussion? There being none, all in favor of Article 17, hands up, please. Thank you, and opposed. Thank you. Article 17 is approved. Article 18.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to reallocate $89,234.05 appropriated under Article 21, Facilities New Mower at the June 5, 2023 Annual Town Meeting, to now be used for the purchase of an F-350 truck to replace the current cemetery truck that is no longer reliable. Oh, sorry. What? Oh, I apologize. Let me rephrase. To be used for the purchase of a F-550 truck to replace the current cemetery truck. F-550.
Mr. Kobus, do you second that by any means?
Second.
Who could forget our discussion a year or two ago about that lawnmower? Remember that one? That was a, that was a good discussion. All right, well, we do have the lawnmower. It works fine. We're all set on that. But we still have significant money left in that account. And we're not going to go out and buy another lawnmower. So we would, uh, the Facilities Department would like to use the leftover money. You've already approved it, but they need your approval to use it for the purchase of a new F-550 truck. Questions, comments? There being none, all in favor of Article 18, hands up, please, and opposed. Thank you. The article is approved. Article 18. 19, we're on.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer from Certified Free Cash the sum of $100,000, said sum to be used for downtown area improvements to cover the holiday lighting displays, irrigation plantings, and other improvements related to downtown Clinton.
Second.
All right, Article 19, we do this every couple of years. It's transferring $100,000 from free cash to use for downtown improvements, the holiday lighting, all of the plantings, things like that. Questions or comments? There being none, all in favor, hands up, please, for Article 19? Thank you, and opposed. Thank you. Article 19 is approved. Article 20.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer from Certified Free Cash the
free cash the sum of $50,000, said sum to be expended for the purchase of a new Facility Director vehicle to replace the current 2010 Explorer.
Second.
All right, Article 20 transfers $50,000 from free cash, again, it's already here, to purchase a new vehicle for the Facility's Director, which replaces a 2010 vehicle. Questions? There being none. All in favor of Article 20? Hands up, please. Thank you. And opposed? Thank you. Article 20 is approved. Article 21.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer from the Capital Projects and Infrastructure Improvements Stabilization Fund, the sum of $1 million, said sum to be expended by the Department of Public Works for road resurfacing and infrastructure improvements as approved by the Select Board.
Second.
All right, this article's transferring $1 million that we already have in a specialized stabilization fund, and transferring it to the DPW to use it for road resurfacing, infrastructure improvements, whatever. The two-thirds vote is required. Questions or comments? Are you voting, or would you like a comment? Come on down. Come on down. Just give us your name and address, and speak into that microphone.
Mitch Friedman, 270 Chestnut Street. Just not reading that as the next article. I'm reading, you didn't read Article 20, did you?
Yes, yeah, we just did that, yes.
$60,000? I thought it was the...
Oh, no, you're looking at Article 22? We haven't got there yet. We're now at 21, which is taking $1 million from the Capital Projects Stabilization Fund for road resurfacing and infrastructure improvements. All right, two-thirds vote is required. Any other questions on that? There being none. All in favor of Article 21? Hands up, please. Thank you. And opposed? Thank you. Article 21 has been approved. Article 22.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer from certified free cash the sum of $60,000, said sum to be expended by the Department of Public Works for the purchase of a new 1-ton pickup truck with plow for the purpose of snow removal, towing trailers, and general work to replace a 2002 pickup.
Second.
All right, this is $60,000 free cash to purchase a new 1-ton truck. It's going to replace an O2 pickup truck. Questions? Comments? There being none. All in favor? Cards up, please. And those opposed to Article 22? Thank you. Article 22 has been approved. Article 23.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer from certified free cash the sum of $385,000, said sum to be expended by the Department of Public Works to continue with the finalization of the design and engineering plans for the Sterling Street project from Lauren Street to Main Street to be submitted to Mass. Department of Transportation for construction funding from the state.
Second.
All right, Article 23 is asking for a transfer of $385,000 coming from free cash, and it's to finalize the design and engineering plans for the Sterling Street project. All right, the actual work is done by the, by the state, but the town of Clinton is responsible for the design cost, $385,000. Questions? Comments? There being none. All in favor of Article 23? Cards up, please. Thank you. And opposed? Thank you. Article 23 has been approved. Article 24.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to borrow the sum of $2 million through the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund, said sum to be expended by the Department of Public Works for the Sewer Infiltration and Inflow Phase 2 project, as mandated by Mass. DEP and WMRA. This includes annual INI reports, design services, and construction inspections, including inspection of the sewer main along Green Street to the wastewater treatment plant, as well as inspections of sewer manholes, sewer mains, and relining of pipes.
Second.
All right, so this article is the only borrowing article tonight, and it requires a two-thirds vote. We're looking for the, to borrow the sum of $2 million to complete Phase 2 of the Sewer Infiltration and Inflow Project, which has been mandated by the Mass. DEP, anyway. Questions? Comments? There being none. All in favor of Article 24? Cards up, please. And opposed? Thank you. Article 24 has been approved. Article 25.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer from certified free cash the sum of $150,000, said sum to be expended by the Department of Public Works for the purchase of a new BACO to replace a 1993 BACO used for roadside sewer drainage and catch basin repairs and installations.
Second.
All right, so Article 25 is an article requesting transferring $150,000 free cash for a new BACO, which is replacing a 1993 model. Questions or comments? There being none. Article 25, all in favor of Article 25? Cards up. And those opposed? Thank you. Article 25 has been approved. Article 26.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer from certified free cash the sum of $125,000, and authorize the Select Board to expend said sum for construction services to build the Mass. Central Rail Trail Clinton and other project costs associated with completing the build phase of the project, provided, however, that the funds appropriated hereunder shall not be expended unless the town is approved for a Mass. Trails grant from the Massachusetts Department of Conservation and Recreation or other grant sources in the amount of $500,000.
Second.
All right, so Article 26 is all contingent on securing a grant from the Mass. Central Rail Trail. All right, the grant is for $500,000. Our share is coming from free cash, anyway, and it's $125,000, but only if we get the grant. Questions? Comments? All those in favor of Article 26? Hands up. And opposed? Thank you. Article 26 has been approved. Article 27.
Mr. Moderator, I move to table Article 27.
Second.
All right, Article 27 deals with retroactive raises for the Clinton Fire Department. We are not set yet to, to go forward, so it's being asked that it be tabled. All those in favor of tabling Article 27? Hands up, please. Thank you. And opposed? All right, it's been tabled. Article 28.
Mr. Moderator, I move to table Article 28.
Second.
All right, Article 28 goes with Article 27. It's part of the negotiations and everything else. So we're looking to have that tabled as well. All those in favor of tabling Article 28? Hands up, please. Thank you. And opposed? All right, Article 28 has been tabled. Article 29.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the personnel bylaws in Sections 5.2-4, 5.3-2, and 5.3-4, as written in the warrant.
All right, so Article 29, it involves the clarification of the personnel bylaws for non-union town employees only. And, and some of these changes deal with termination, with prorated vacation time, how many sick days can be accumulated, how many can be bought back, et cetera. I don't know if someone from Personnel, we'd like to, the Personnel Board would like to talk about that, or are ready to vote? The silence is overwhelming. Okay. Article 29, all those in favor of the changes to the personnel bylaw? Hands up, please, in favor of Article 29? And opposed? Thank you. Article 29 has been approved. Article 30.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaw in Section 8100, as written in the warrant.
Second.
All right, Article 30 is the updating of mandated floodplain bylaws that have some very serious implications if you live in a flood zone in this area. So I, Phil is going to explain, because I can't. Phil?
Mr. Moderator, Bill Conley, Jr., 46 Winthrop Street. Phil, correct me, did you just say that the Planning Board does not approve?
The Planning Board is...
And that's for Article 30 or 31?
Can you speak into the microphone?
Are both articles under? So 31 isn't on the table yet.
So Article 30 has to do with updating the language in our existing floodplain or language bylaw within the zoning protocol. The federal management program, the federal program, which is not by law. If you're not updating the floodzone maps, and require the towns to adopt them and bring their knowledge into compliance with the requirements. Last night I sat there, it was 2014, it's happened every 10, 12 years or so. There's no question that exists. In order to participate in the program, it requires that everybody be consistent with their requirements. In this update, there are no new laws. There is a requirement that the local boards, when approving zoning permits in the floodplain, that they are, that the applicants have received their required state or federal floodplain permits. That is a major change in the bylaw. Otherwise, the environment regulations do enforce it. Risk is based on known risks, is not forward-looking, and continuing to point that. And we have passed these updates in the past since we began to take the order of change. Consequences of failing to update our bylaw are substantial and crucial force in business of the town. Currently, there are 14 federal management policies covering five community, the property down. We fail to comply with the requirements, those insurance policy will be rescinded, putting those persons, those persons property and mortgage at risk. In addition, additional policies will be issued in the town. In addition, not moving to be here for a case that is, as highlighted by the state. Federal grants for water development will not be available by natural floodwater areas. It supplies some programs eventually by local agencies that are proper, because they are developing. EPA can assist all of this. And we have a key to run through, streets and floodplains like that, which have been portions of grocery in the past, that our own floodplain, human environment, gets nothing for those. We will be giving it to the public, such as, set better than the federal program. Federal disaster systems will not be provided to terminate, repair, and manage each of the buildings in identical flood areas. Federal warranty trusts will guarantee, such as the Federal Health Administration, which is part of the veteran's, not be identified, not provided by that by flood areas. And federal insurance, the regular, the maintenance issues, such as, are allowed to be mentioned to the children, the children, the children, the areas, the, 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 the byproducts, and property, is not the area, and property is not all of the purposes. Someone that they ultimately would choose not to. So, this really is just administrative, we can't make, I actually pass it, I actually cannot tell the assets, those persons, or the owners of insurance. And I actually, when the town first started to make the forward, person grants, they could sure against potential for loss.
I didn't hear a lot of that, Phil, but there are obvious, very serious implications if we do not do this, correct?
Do you hear me? Your voice makes it fast. Sorry.
Don't do it again.
Not this article, Mr. Moderator.
Oh, it's okay. I got a burger to eat. All right. Now that we all know exactly what this is all about, we can, all those in, any other questions or comments? Obviously, yes, sir.
Did you read the 13th one? I just have a quick, a quick question. You said it's not meant to change to the end of the bylaw. But why would, why would delete the entire section? Do we know, if we know what's changed, or just basically what?
Most of you deleted entirely, because it was easier than going in line by line and making very subtle changes to the extent of description of an existing bylaw. So it was easier to pull it out and put it back, but for your information, this doesn't have to make, I have to make a thought, where it shows the old letters and new language, and most instances, it's not.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering, because other, other things I showed, they won't add, opposed to this one?
Any other questions or comments on this? All those in favor of Article 30? Signify by raising your hands now, please. All right, thank you. And opposed? All right, Article 30 has been approved. Article 31, which is related, by the way.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaw in Section 10000, as written in the warrant.
Second.
All right, Article 31 is more about the definitions, and sort of adopting the, the state definitions of the last article that you just voted on. Phil?
To give the report, Phil, to give the report of the time, the planning board, the planning board, the public hearing on May 6, voting to be to disapprove Article 31. Article 31 is an update to the definition, section of the bylaw, which is section 10,000, to bring the defined articles into compliance with the requirements.
Mr. Moderator, Bill Conley, Jr., 46 Winthrop Street. I'd like to make a motion to amend Article 31. And with your permission, can I turn the microphone and face the voters and...
You can do anything.
People were asking to spend money. I'm proposing to delete, on the second page, towards the end, the paragraph that says "substantial repair of a foundation." This doesn't have anything to do with floodplain storage, or floodplain grants, or money. But what it does do is, if you're, you own an older house with a stone foundation, this is just an example, and you need to repair your foundation, if you're repairing more than 50% of it, you have to bring your whole house into compliance with today's building code. That means windows, that means energy, that means furnaces, everything that's in the building code today would apply to, some of you, many of you own houses that were built in the late 1800s. My son has one that was built in 1880. And I'd like to call this the "contractor retirement" paragraph, because that's what you, most of you, if you get faced with this decision, it's going to be borderline whether it's worth repairing your house, or tearing it down and build new to comply with the code. It may be cheaper. So I'm asking you to, to eliminate this paragraph... So I'm asking you to eliminate this paragraph from the proposed bylaw. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. All right. From this moment on, we... Is there a second to his amendment?
(inaudible).
Okay. Now, we're just discussing his amendment right now. So any questions, comments? Discussion on the amendment only. Question? Phil?
(inaudible). 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 (inaudible).
Any other discussion on, again, the amendment only, that Bill's amendment is to simply delete the entire paragraph on the second page, substantial repair of a foundation?
Chris Magliozzi, 168 Walland Street. Member of your Standing Building Committee and a contractor for 40 years, and I respectfully disagree with Mr. Duffy's interpretation of the building code. You have to bring your whole house to court if your substantial renovation is 50 percent of your home, not your foundation. There's a big difference between those two things. And so I would agree and ask you to support Mr. Conley's amendment to this.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, or discussion on the amendment? All right. I guess it's time to vote on the amendment. All those in favor of amending Article 31 to remove the substantial repair of a foundation, signify by raising your card now at this time? Thank you and opposed. Thank you. The amendment passes, and we will scratch the substantial repair of a foundation from that. Now we're back to the article itself. Is there any discussion on Article 31 in general? Now we've changed it. There being none. All in favor of the new Article 31, raise your cards, please. Thank you and opposed. Thank you. Article 31 has been approved. Article 32.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaw in Sections 4330 and 4320 as written in the warrant.
Second.
All right. This article, Article 32, deals with... It's a zoning bylaws about Connex boxes, which I didn't even know what they were. But those are the large steel storage boxes that you can put tools in, material from your attic, construction materials, your mother-in-law... No, I didn't mean that. That's what this bylaw is all about, okay? Questions, comments? Yes, Bill?
Mr. Moderator, Bill Conley Jr., 46 Winthrop Street. I move to table this article.
All right. And you're telling us why?
If you'll permit me.
Sure.
The reason I'm proposing that this article be tabled is it's confusing, it doesn't necessarily solve the problems that we have in town, and I'm proposing, and I have proposed to the Planning Board, that they meet with concerned residents who are impacted by this bylaw and by the existing bylaw as well, and create one that's compatible for everybody in town, not just ban them, get rid of them, because it's complicated, but in the end, if you have one, you got to get rid of it. And just as a footnote, the town of Clinton, the entity of the town, is probably the biggest owner of these type of containers. So...
I'm sorry, Bill. Thank you. All right. We're talking about tabling. Is there a second on tabling this entire article?
Second.
Second. Any discussion on the tabling? All in favor, then, of tabling Article 32, signify by raising your card now? Thank you and opposed. All right. Article 32 has been tabled. All right. Article 33.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 33.
Second.
All right. Article 33. This happened last year too, and I'm sure that there's going to be some discussion. This is an important article for a lot of people. Steps weren't necessarily taken that go through the proper red tape and process that needs to be done. So we can submit it after we kick it around, and we want to hear from the people who sponsor this, and if you're against it, we want to hear that discussion. But it does not look like it... It looks more like a referendum than anything else. In other words, what we do here tonight may not count at all. You know, Attorney Gibbons has said he can submit it however we vote on it, but his firm does not think that it will really cover the muster properly of the Attorney General's office. Everything we do tonight goes to the Attorney General's office, and they can say, no matter if it's 100 percent vote, it's not right. The wording wasn't right, a hearing wasn't done, whatever. Questions, comments, or discussion on Article 33?
(inaudible). 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 (inaudible).
Mr. Moderator, Bill Conley Jr., 46 Winthrop Street. I was taught a long time ago, when I first got into public service, to remember this key point. You don't have a dog in every fight. And I probably shouldn't be getting up here talking about something that doesn't really affect me. But I know that the proponents of this article are not here, or they're not residents of Clinton, so they cannot speak for themselves. They may be here, but they can't speak and they can't vote. So I'd like to encourage you, in spite of the idea that it may not pass muster, that you treat this as a referendum and send an indication to the proponents and to the Attorney General's office of how the town feels about it. And I'd encourage you to support it. It doesn't hurt the town. It serves all the resident... Anyone that is a pet owner in the town of Clinton has this need for an overnight kennel. And I believe that the owners of the property support it, and it serves you. It doesn't serve the state, it doesn't serve everybody else. It's service that would be available to dog owners in Clinton. So I'd encourage you to vote in favor of it.
Thank you, Bill. The proponents do have a speaker here. Do they want to come down and talk about this? I met them earlier. There was a spokesman from town who... Yes?
Hi, Emma Wiseman, 16 Palmer Court. I was just kind of thrown into reading this last minute, so bear with me. But why dog boarding is needed? Pet owners' busy schedules, travel requirements, lack of pet sitting options, providing a safe environment for dogs, socializing dogs, exercising and providing play options for dogs, providing jobs for trained staff for care and supervision, reducing stress for pet owners, offering peace of mind for pet owners, and a convenient location. I agree with Bill, is it? I think this would greatly benefit our town. I'm a dog owner, and I would love to be able to go on vacation. I need a place to be able to board my pets. So this really hits home for me. More benefits for the pet owners, peace of mind knowing your dog is safe and happy while you're away, convenient boarding options for short stays or long stays, trusted and experienced staff caring for your dog needs, regular updates and photos so you can stay connected with your pets. Facility features include clean and comfortable kennels and suites, secure and fenced outdoor play areas, and climate-controlled facilities for year-round comfort. We, as Clinton residents and taxpayers, deserve to have a dog boarding facility in our town. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Robert Craig, 307 B Ridgefield Circle. I'm just wondering why cats aren't included.
Yes, yes.
Full disclosure, my dog spent some time at Fenway Park, and he loves it. When I was first contacted about this petition, I had questions about why the bylaw is on the books in the first place. And I encourage them to talk to the Planning Board or the Board of Health. I don't know if it's a zoning thing, if it's a Board of Health issue. I'm not opposed to the concept. I'm just curious. It's on the books for a reason now. And that's, I guess, some questions I'd want answered going forward. Similarly, and I'll encourage anybody who does citizen petition, if you're going to rewrite a law, you have to write a law. So it's not easy to do, and if you're... This happens every year. Please find a lawyer friend or somebody who can look at it, because these things tend to get complicated, as you can see from 2930, where the zoning board... This is a zoning bylaw that we're asking to change. It's not just a matter of flipping a switch. So, again, I'm not opposed to this. I'm just curious why it's on the books now, and I haven't found out why.
I was going to make a joke saying doggone it, but I just can't. Sorry. Why don't we vote? Okay, yes.
Nancy Teasdale, 807 Ledgewood Way. With all respect to the petitioner, I move to table this article based on the fact that it is not written... It's not fully filled out, right, in terms of being a complete law?
All right. Well, we can table it, and we'll go to a vote on that. If it's not tabled, we can go forward it like it's a regular article and vote yes, no, or whatever. It can go... You know, Attorney Gibbons will send it into the Attorney General's office like all the other articles, and in, I believe, somewhere around 90 days, we would find out if it's not... Doesn't cut mustard or whatever with the Attorney General's office. So the recommendation is to table it. So all those... Is there a second to table?
Second.
Second. All right. All those in favor of tabling this article, signify by raising your card now. All right. And all those opposed? I don't think it went... I don't think it went. I don't think it stayed. I don't believe... I think tabling was defeated. So let's go back to the original. Let's vote on this, knowing that it may not work at the end of it all anyway, but at least at town meeting, we would have an idea of people in favor or not in favor. Yes, Bill?
(inaudible).
Sorry, one what?
(inaudible).
I don't think tabling... All right. So it would be a two-thirds vote. So why don't we... Why don't we vote on this? All right. All those in... Am I... Was there... I'm sorry. Go ahead. Sure, why not? Yes. I'm sorry. Kind of hiding behind the curtain here.
Susan Bonica, 23 Wilson Street. I just... If we don't pass this, can it come back up? Because it doesn't do really... I mean, I don't see the benefit of passing it for one address.
I don't think there's enough teeth in the way it was written to do anything. But maybe it would be better, at least if we showed the Attorney General's office that a majority of people would like to see this. It doesn't mean anything. There'll be another town meeting probably in the fall this year, because we have some unfinished business. They could come back again, the people who sponsor this, with more detailed legalized writing and all of that, too.
Okay. So if we pass this today, and then it gets kicked back because of the way it's written?
Yeah.
We can then put it forward again, written properly?
Yes. Do you want to answer that?
Yes, that's correct. Well, this is... If this passes tonight, the way this gets submitted to the Attorney General's office is just as written. It's submitted just as written. And, you know, my opinion is that the Attorney General's office is most likely going to reject it. He's going to say there's not enough substance here, because it doesn't say what the bylaw is. But at the town meeting vote tonight to move it forward, go to the AG's office, we should hear approximately 90 to 120 days from the AG whether or not it passes or is screwed, which my opinion is it's not going to. But then we can come back, and then we can craft a zoning bylaw that has more substance to it than... Then get voted on at the town meeting against...
So it could come back, definitely.
It seems that it's something that we could benefit from, but it doesn't look the way it's written is...
So there's nothing hurt by passing it tonight here, this group, and then if we get it back, we redo it a better way for a future town meeting?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
With all due respect, I wouldn't look at this as a referendum for the Secretary, the Attorney General. It's for us and the Planning Board. Send a message to the town if this is something you want. The Attorney General is not going to pass this. But if this is something you want, let us know. Let the Planning Board know tonight.
Yes.
(inaudible). I do see that there would be an need for this type of businesses, but we have one for the blood dog daycare. So I do not support having a bylaw that supports one business. It doesn't support none. So I am tired of the (inaudible).
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Move the question.
Is there a second to move the question?
Second.
Let's move the question. Good. All those in favor, no matter what happens, all those in favor of... Where are we? Article 32. Signify by raising your hands now, please.
Article 33.
I'm sorry. 33. Passed my bedtime. 33. Those are in favor. Thank you. All opposed. The article did not pass. It is not approved. All right. Remember, for those people who sponsor this, you can come back to a future meeting, try again with different language, whatever, following the red tape that needs to be done. Before we adjourn, don't forget, next Monday night is... Next Monday is Election Day. The polls are open right here from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned.